Also.
Number two, kind of small student.
Oh, and so you can do that, too.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
More, everybody. All in meeting to order. We're taking a motion to approve the agenda in the middle, so. I'll sign it. There's a motion in the second, all favor I. Oh. Okay, more rich.
On, I'm gonna talk about, we uh took some over quotes here last week. Probably about, it's probably not a lot of fight that we're getting, it's gonna be about twenty thousand dollars, like just some to have an inventory, some that we've got spoken for. Um. In our paint map, we're gonna send their painting out this week, I think, for the votes. The guys should put their. Shakes out here in the end, other than that, that's um on got the maintenance. Um. And then I did get an email back, but maybe this week next. It's. We. Yeah, provision there. I was. Yeah, it's light up.
How good? Is any questions for Rich? But. Okay, thank you.
Pleasure.
Really, get some drainage claims and stamp warrants. A motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the drainage claims.
Also, yeah, there any discussion on any of it? Hear none, all favor I. I oppose. Here. Yeah. Any work orders? Good time, um. Right, really, claims. Motion to approve the regular claims.
Second, I'll second that.
Any discussion with questions on them? Hear none, all favor I. Uh, opposed. Here is. Any reports? Treasury report. They're more quickly, the Treasury people. Hurt. Or for for answer, there is. I'll make a most good proof of the court report. Alright, discussion. All favor I. Next, I oppose. Here. Only payroll eligibility or salary changes. You know, it's over last week. Like a license. Discussion on possible action, action on Oxyant fee and commission disposal statement.
Um, I think, I think. Um, this is just a. Yeah, and we'll need sign. Um, just those in the fees and stuff that we can.
For annual on the fee. Yeah. Your motion to approve the fees for Oxyant. I'll make a motion.
Also, yeah.
Yes, I can. Hearing none, all favor I, by my, I suppose. Here is.
No, I don't know where, sign that, but I don't know if they'll still want you to dock you sign, that's the one thing that to get you to dock you.
That's send the morning.
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't. No, it it was, it was actually real.
Oh, you said no farm now, right now?
I haven't opened it, I was good, but and I've asked and nobody's got nothing else, and so I was going off in the tree suddenly.
You're doing well.
And then I know more later that afternoon, I got another.
Well, and I don't think they understand that. You guys are bored and you can't just.
Sign that on a computer. Right, well, then I didn't know if it was from my insurance for me, or if it was.
Didn't come to the county, you know, but you never know.
Right, so, yeah.
So it's all good now.
Okay.
Better safe than sorry.
So then they still want me to.
I don't know yet, I'll let you know if they need that.
Actually, need to go get that online signature. All right, uh, set public hearing date for fiscal year twenty four budget amendment.
Yeah, you all know what I screwed up, so, um. It's just, I already got it sent to the newspaper, it's for the um, the thirty thousand dollars that we still need to get to the ambulance department.
Okay. What date is that for?
On June third at eight forty five.
All right, is there a motion to set public hearing date for June third at eight forty five?
I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, your second?
I'll say it.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I.
Alright.
I suppose. Right, the public hearing date sets. And then one forty five nine. Those resolutions still with those building and grounds. Uh, long moment, I did talk to Shane last week. Um. He will spray if we wanted to, uh, spray it all, however, we just gotta let him know, said it probably be the name of three hundred dollars to spray.
Maybe chemical and everything.
Yeah, chemical, everything applied. Um, and then everything like around the landscaping, that's just part of it, go up through, there's stuff that needs being removed. Oil, whatever.
They got garbage before he mows it.
Yep.
It's hard on the lawn, so.
Right. Yep, so he's, and then um. Yeah, let's just take care of public health as needed as far as um weed eating, spraying. Keep all that stuff down, things there's, although we really want to grow, there'd be weeds coming through landscaping and sidewalk cracks and all that stuff.
Yep.
Um.
It was fifty bucks a week for mowing.
Yep.
And then ten for public health.
Yep, when he, when he goes there.
Yep.
And then um.
We had.
July and August, if it doesn't need mowed, it's not getting mowed, so just charge it for when it is getting mowed. Uh, it's not gonna mow unless it needs to be mowed, so it's not a, like I said, if we get in the hot days of summer.
Yeah.
We don't need it mowed every week, if it's gonna be every two or three weeks, he says, not gonna mow unless it needs to be mowed, so.
Good.
Insurance.
Yeah, we got that, so we, if we uh want to approve, you can get all that to you.
Yeah, cool.
So.
Have him start the week of May nineteen, then.
We'll start this week, or just do, okay.
That works.
As long as he gets us insurance, he can drop insurance off of her office and go back out and mow if he wants. Let the rest get on it right away. But you guys are okay with that?
I'm just empty.
I'll let Russ know that we don't need him, we can, this week.
Okay.
Well, that's for some reason Shane gave it to here, but he told us we wouldn't have this especially on Monday, we probably would be starting this week.
I'm just gonna move him certain bit, and then I know Shane that. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, there's a guy.
I'll sign that.
Good, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I.
Alright.
Bye, bye, both. Alright, Shane Baton will be mowing the uh courthouse grounds and taking care of the stuff at public health.
Are you gonna get a hold of him?
I'll call him soon.
And then let me know if you can start this week or not.
Okay.
Because we do have, we got a backup for this week if we need it.
Okay.
So.
Good, you have to have him get his insurance in here.
So then, so then next week, do you want a possible closed session? For reducing hours? Um. Brian?
Yeah. Okay. I'd say yes.
Okay. Yeah, reduce some hours on the. Janitorial services.
Yep.
Put that down for next week then. And that, windows, did that go, we have to. What's that, is it out?
Yeah.
You emailed us what you're gonna file.
This one's okay, okay.
Got you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Sounds good. Yeah. Uh, water main, um. Jason's employee that other week or two, I think, but. Um, his way, that's a final stuff in the D and R, D and R, so. Sounds like the D and R is not hiring any experienced people anymore.
Hmm.
Really, they've got, yeah, they've got new senior engineer, and everybody else is kind of coming out fresh out of college, so they haven't learned the process yet, so delaying permits across the state. Which ours has been there for quite some time, and we're not giving them this. So they have something about that, they're, they're not hiring experienced people, which is even anymore, and it's. Putting pressure on the, on the two senior people they have, which in probably five years, ten years, they'll probably be to the age of retired, but anyway, they come from.
So you hire the young ones, give them experience, and then make some.
Probably, and it'd be, might turn themselves into a stepping stone real fast, yeah.
Whatever.
So that's where we are in the.
Nobody find out about the elevator?
No.
But it only. That's on me. Is it now working or is it working?
It's working, we just need to do, we just gotta figure out if we wanna do the update before it crashes on us, right, and basically. Is the parts readily available or something, that would be.
That point.
Do, whether we just do it or wait till it fails and then.
Well, if you wait till it fails and then the parts back, that's a way to figure out, so.
Might be better idea just to go ahead and fix it now, probably. Needs to work. Um, if we did do that, would that be something we wanna do before end of the year or after?
Probably after.
After, just make it easier for them.
We're getting like, oh, so.
Yeah. Uh, when we're back, oh, what's on there?
I'll be on Cedar Rapids tomorrow and Wednesday at the Dove Conference.
Dub, what's dub?
Dev.
Dev.
It's where you go learn about Tiff.
Yeah.
Why, does you wanna come with?
Oh. Remember a couple sessions on there.
Just a few.
Weather's supposed to be good for the next couple of days, so better go to work. Okay, anything else?
Uh, and then if any three, if all three of you or one of you would like to do an interview with Kaylee. Um, she did a, an interview with another advisory board member, and I kinda like how she approached the interview. She goes a little more in depth than what uh Golden Shovel did, so um, let me know and I can set something up. So we have two from Worth County, and I'm getting one executive board member from Winnebago County, so it'd be nice to go back to an executive board member for Worth County.
Yeah.
That.
Well, you guys fight it out. I get enough attention.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
To, just have to get ahold of us.
Have Kayla call more, have Kayla call Mark, it sounds like.
Alright, he's, he belongs to you.
Yeah. Alright.
Sounds super available, but yeah.
Yeah.
She does it by phone, she'll do it by phone, it'll be a lot easier.
Perfect.
Do it on a rain day, you might get a better chance.
Get my head set up.
Is that it?
I think that's all I have.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
You bet.
Alright, you guys, I'm gonna delay you just for a few minutes, it's almost eight forty five, yeah, um, so we can do our first public hearing, then we'll. Then we'll uh discuss your reports. Um. And jump into supervisor week with George for a minute or two, Enes, you doing it?
Uh, I have North Iowa Children's Alliance. And basically there, we gave the director, Jackie. Well, we kinda, we send in what each county has done with their elected officials, and then he goes ahead and goes through it, and then he comes back with a recommendation, and they came back. One five percent raise, which I thought was right in, so, other than that, we spent just about the whole board meeting on the RFPs. For all the different organizations that want money, and uh. We gave everybody exactly what they wanted, except for three of them, we came up a little bit short of money there, and then there was one other new one that we decided not to do, which was that, we got an email on it quite a few months ago about Mason's Cerroir County with their daycare moving in and supplementing the wages for two dollars an hour, and they wanted us to participate in that, we decided that that was too isolated an area that all the counties wouldn't benefit from that, so we didn't do that one at all, that was my week.
Alright, I'm gonna recess the regular meeting. And I would take a motion to open the public hearing for fiscal year twenty four budget amendment.
So.
Alright, I'll second it. Okay, roll call vote, lower, maybe, stone.
Alright.
Public hearing is open on the fiscal year twenty four budget amendment. And then uh, both of it, Jackie, right, is ARP funds that were dispersing to A month services and.
In capital project, there's a different change of it.
Capital project, and then um.
And then um, we paid more interest, so I'm just catching that up. And. Um, we spent opioid money, so we're taking care of that. Civil service, um, spent more money than normal on advertising, so we're keeping that up a little bit. Did the house file seven thirteen um mailing, that was three thousand dollars, so to pay that. And um. Um, the one. Was for capital for the first, or the the last urban renewal amendment we did before, the one we just did, um, that was for um veterinary fees. Um, it's about that, and um conservation had a vehicle that um, they spent more than what they budgeted, so they brought money in from their fund, so we needed to increase that expense. To um, get that paid for, and. Pretty much, others. I was a little off on um Niagara membership dues.
Yeah. Alright, is there any questions or comments from the public on our budget amendment? Anybody on Zoom have any questions or comments on our budget amendment?
Seen anything there?
Hearing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, I'll say it.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, lower, maybe, so, I, public hearing is closed on the budget amendments. I'll reconvene on our regular meeting. And resolution twenty twenty four dash two seven is to amend fiscal year twenty three twenty four work county budget. Their motion to approve resolution to amend our budget.
List the public open.
Yeah.
Not doing that separate.
No. That was included in that budget amendment.
Now it's for twenty five?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't see that one. I mean, if you wanted to amend it, I can fix it and save it out, but.
Your question, one?
Yeah.
Well, let's get a motion and a second on the resolution, and then let's, let's discuss it. Uh, so their motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty two seven.
I'll make that a motion in a second.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, so the last question on, this is strictly for salaries, right?
Um. Well, I mean, they won't make salaries if this doesn't happen, because that vehicle was already taken.
So. She misprojected the need for those salaries, is that happened, I guess she's not here, she couldn't make it importantly, and that's fine. So, I mean, my question is, is to me, it opens up a big hand here going forward on other budgets too, that you know, especially with what we're doing, plus we cut seven eighteen and trying to cut things and everything else, it's like, you just come back a year later and ask for more money for this, I mean, I don't know how you project your budgets, I don't, there's no overtime in there, nothing like that, she should have known hours, I would think, but.
Well, I never said there was more money, I, I said that it wasn't getting levied for. So it, it would be extra and it would come out of reserves.
Right. And that's where, like I say, going forward, anybody could do that, any department could do that a year from now, we'd be in the same board.
And if enough people do it, we'll have money.
Right.
So she'd budgeted thirty thousand for a vehicle, and we made the recommendation to see if they could possibly get a decent W C D A grant for it, which they later went ahead and did.
Two.
Actually, went for two.
Right, but I didn't know about that, when we made that, and they did the budget, not this last one, but a year ago.
They only put.
They had thirty thousand dollars on their budget, and I made the comment, is there a possibility of going to W C D A like conservation does, and get them, and they said that they would look into that. Well, I never heard back from them in the fall, then, and when the W C D A grants came on, I didn't see it there, it wasn't until after the first of the year that I found out that they went after two of them, not just one, and they didn't budget for two of them, the second one. So, and they didn't get the second one.
Right. But they did go ahead and purchase it.
But they did go ahead and purchase it, and that's why they're short twenty five thousand now, under capital expenditures for vehicles. So what's that got to do with general basic and supplemental wages? Were we stealing from of the capital expenditures for vehicles to help pay wages?
It all comes out of the general fund.
Right, I realize that, but you shouldn't be able to budget for a vehicle, and then if you don't buy it, because you didn't budget right for capital expenditures under the general and basic, well, we'll just use some money from there, otherwise, like you said, everybody can do it down the road.
Yep.
Just like they do with, just like they do with office equipment. Fifteen hundred bucks, didn't spend nothing, fifteen, didn't spend nothing, fifteen, didn't spend nothing, they come back in with fifteen hundred, now granted, we gotta have cushion in there, but.
Right, you gotta have that cushion there, but still.
Need cushion in other areas.
Right, it shouldn't be just there to be able to use just because he miscalculated or did something you probably couldn't do.
And granted, it all comes down to the bottom line anyway, and it all comes out of, it all comes out of the general, it's just.
So what happens is, the second vehicle should have been delayed another year, that's right.
And it should have been budgeted for, whether you wanted to go for another grant or whatever, you could still do the, you know, you could still go after it that way, or do other.
See, I didn't realize they'd went after two vehicles till about February this year, when you brought it to my attention, 'cause I said they're running behind on home health aides as far as their wages go, and I went, wow, there's, they're not gonna be able to make it unless they got somebody that's gonna quit or something.
Unless they got money somewhere else they can steal from inside their budget, and they did not.
And it boils down to at this point, if we don't do this, you won't make salary and then you got more problems.
Yeah, yeah. There's, we're just trying to avoid it down the road, so that people, when you budget, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be budgeting vehicles as you're, well, if I come up short on salary, or come up short on this, we're gonna steal from that, and then we just won't buy the vehicle.
And there should be a capital plan.
There should be a capital plan.
Well, there was two suggestions from Mike Galway, Dr. Mike Friday. One, I said, we could left side, we could, we could say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do it. Um, Jesse would have to make the choice of laying some people off until first of new fiscal year. You know, that's not what I'd like to see happen probably, his other suggestion was, is we could make this amendment subject to that amount of money would come out of their next year's prediction. And these both came from Mike Galway. So basically, we would have to amend the motion. At least the part of public health that would be, we will give them what they're asking for, but it'll have to come out of their total budget for next year. So she'll have to lower her budget another twenty, whatever thousand dollars. And that's figured out how to do it, because I, I mean, I could see her falling short again next year, if you projected basically the same amount of wages. Means we've already cut it, I mean, it's so, you know, it's, it's gonna take some they're gonna have to do some finessing, we're doing some looking, and we look at, you know, sharing or whatever it's gonna take to get these costs down.
Name Jeff. Yeah, you know, can I just mention components and all of here, okay? When he made it the, we're the December of twenty two, we're made our fiscal year budget for twenty two twenty four. And at that time, yes, we were going to request thirty thousand dollars for a single vehicle. And then it was brought up to us later, that maybe we should look at two of them, uh, applying for a grant to two vehicles, and the, the budget had been approved already at that time for our single.
Hadn't you said?
Yeah.
For one vehicle.
One vehicle, it had been approved when you guys decided this.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
Then, we didn't comply for the first round uh, of vehicles, we did the second round as far as the grants from W C D A, and at that time, they went ahead and wrote for two of them. And the outside chance you could possibly get to. Okay, we finally got the one approved in November. At that point. We felt that the money that W C D A gave us for that vehicle you know, was go for, or how do I say it, cancel out, or not really cancel out that thirty thousand dollars, but the county got the thirty thousand dollars for that first vehicle. Now, we do have emails, and you guys should have all got them here, of emails that we sent between the author's office and Jesse of in the middle of December. When we discussed at our board of health meeting, and Mark, we just, you were there, you made a motion, we should go ahead and purchase your other vehicle, along with money in, in my belt. And we talked with Jackie about it, and emails just said here that we will make these work. And uh, we did not go ahead without, with the purchase of the vehicle until we had the okay from the God resolve.
But that's because I, I could change, I could change the expenses, I didn't know where the revenue was coming from.
Right. And per se, we're not be final anyway, her would be a suggestion, it would still come down to us and the board of health. But nobody can make an action separately in this county, so all this people he was making suggestions, and that's what I, during the motion that I made, the suggestion before we go ahead and purchase the table, make sure everything works out budget wise, well, that never happened. Jesse didn't quite understand what was going on, and. And.
You got. If we, when we budget for a vehicle at thirty thousand dollars. She also has to know that there's tax money or something that's been paid for, because if they don't pay that thirty thousand dollars, we gotta be able to take it out of the taxes, so she's not only doing it on this side with the thirty thousand dollars as an expense, she's doing it over here on the tax side with thirty thousand dollars.
Or a grant.
Or a grant, so if you go in there and say that, well, we got thirty thousand in the budget for an expense over here, and then the thirty thousand dollars here is gonna come from the W C D A which we're not quite sure about yet. When it.
If it didn't happen.
If it didn't happen, then buy. That's right.
So it did, the first one happened, what was fine, the second one, at that point, should have never happened, because there was no other tax revenue there.
It was never budgeted for, and there was nothing to pay for.
And there was no other casino money to pay, or grant money to pay for it.
Because they said one vehicle and not two, so.
And even if they would have said two, they only got one.
That's right. Well, that's, yeah, they said.
Yeah, there was, there was still been tough, but, you know.
Yeah, on the revenue side, we just, it was W C D A that we had kinda banked on to pay for that first vehicle, that thirty thousand, right, Jackie? Yep.
Yep. And there was no budget for the second one.
So there wasn't really revenue for another thirty thousand, twenty five thousand for another vehicle ever in the budget, so, does that make sense to any?
Pardon me?
Did that make sense to you?
Well, I'm just trying to look back here, like I said, we did get it okay.
It's not in the.
Okay, just a suggestion, just a suggestion.
It, I can make it work. For us to go ahead, now, I understand at this point here now that it's a different thing, whether it was a capital expenditure. Uh, you know, for.
It would be anything in the budget, if it wasn't.
Yeah, wouldn't begin it.
If they.
Gotta have revenue to pay for it.
Anything.
Well, we don't thought that the revenue came in from the.
It paid for the vehicle.
Paid for the one, right. But we thought the thirty thousand dollars that we got from W C D A was going to pay to that first vehicle, which it did.
Which it did.
Which it did. But it was already planned in.
Thirty thousand dollars in cash. No.
No, no, it's been planned on that money being coming from W C D A on the revenue side, so that's. So the thirty here, thirty, thirty is on expense side under the budget. She planned on W C D A paying for the thirty thousand for the vehicle and then taking out of the tax revenue.
Because we never had okayed the tax revenue.
That's right.
Previous budget, we okayed it as a factor to be a grant. And that's where the complication is complicated.
It's kind of, yeah.
You know, if we weren't back, I would just ask another question just right here, if we went back. And June when we decided to write for two vehicles. Would if we, would we have been able to ask for an amendment down to a better budget then or not?
I don't think you can amend the budget before the year even starts, can you, Jackie?
Well, we'd have waited till after.
Or June is before.
But it still boils down to you only got the money for the one.
Yeah. But it would have been enough, it would have been in the twenty three, twenty four.
He's wanting to know if June of twenty two, after we approved the budgets for the next year, which was now. If they had come in and asked for another vehicle. For the budget that starts July first, if that was possible.
But it's no, wouldn't have been levied for.
Right, levied for. Yeah, what, yeah, you could have, yeah, it wouldn't have been levied for.
Could have been subject to.
You're glad you got it catch twenty two yet.
Yep, we all are on the catch twenty doing these budget things all the time. You, you need, you have to plan ahead or that it gets you in trouble.
But it still boils down to if you didn't get the W C D A money, you would have been stealing from the. General fund because it wasn't allowed for in the general fund, it wasn't planned for.
Unless you had money in your budget from somewhere else, you did not, you knew it, then we could have transferred within your budget because it had already been levied for.
And that was way too tight and I knew that in January already.
It was, yeah, that's the big problem. It was never, never levied for, never planned for. I mean, there's, there's taxes levy, but when you basically she robbed from the salary side to take care of that vehicle. And you can't do that.
And other.
You shouldn't.
You couldn't do that.
That's, there should be a difference between capital and everything else.
Unless you absolutely knew that you're gonna be, you didn't spend thirty thousand on these wages, we can transfer it over here this year, you know, because.
You still shouldn't be able to do that. That's what I've been against all along. You shouldn't get to budget.
Right.
Office furniture and vehicles and then don't purchase the stuff and keep doing it every year. And then take that money and use it for wages and everything else.
Unless you have a capital plan.
Right.
Where you are trying to build it up and it's technically still within the general fund and not using.
Well, it's gonna be within that general fund, but yeah, you should build each year.
Or like conservation will move it over to their conservation reserve fund and then pull it back when they, when they buy a vehicle like they just.
Just did it.
And that's what I tried.
Short what nineteen thousand and they moved it into that and so now they were moving it back again for them.
That's what I tried to explain at the meeting, nobody can not remove it, so. Well, it is, it is confused, but.
I think they started doing it this year on this year's budget. Where they put in the one, they put in one at thirty thousand, I don't remember which one it was, and then they did another one at seventy five. So they're trying to, they started off building it. But then when we had different departments cut budgets. That was one of the things, what's happened.
They had to cut it off, I mean, we had to cut sixty something dollars, whatever it was on our budget.
There is other, other avenues that they're gonna have to start with public health board, yes, look at, we can't do it here in this one, it's something we're gonna have to look at. And that is looking how we can reduce costs through sharing or whatever we're gonna do.
Um, I know there's more discussion on this, but we've got a nine o'clock public hearing we need to do, so I'm just, we gotta just set this aside for one second. I should, so I'll say for a few minutes so we get this done and then we cut back and finish the discussion, okay, okay? I want to recess the regular meeting again. And uh, take a motion to open the public hearing to uh, sell county property, so. If they're second, second, okay. Uh, roll call vote, lower, hi, maybe, stone, hi. All right, our public hearing is open, um. For any discussion, questions, or comments on selling county property, which is out near the water tower northwest of the casino. Does any of the public have any questions or comments? Anyone on Zoom, questions or comments? Okay, not hearing any. You didn't have any. Emails or letters, so um, I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, I'll say it. All right, there's a motion of second, uh, roll call vote, lower, hi, maybe, stone, hi. Public hearing is closed and I will reconvene our regular meeting. I'll say back to this discussion we ever had with them, um, the uh, resolution uh, twenty twenty four dash two seven in the budget.
So again, Mike made a couple suggestions in Friday when we chatted with him. And one would be like, say, just to. Basically, if the amendment was, but if you would not grant the. Twenty whatever, twenty five, twenty five thousand if they're asking for it, Jesse would have to make. Figure something out between now and first of July and get that out of her budget. I, I don't probably want to see that happen. You know, the other suggestion like you say would be to make it. Amend the motion, subject to public health, taking that out of the twenty four, twenty five budget. Out of their twenty four, twenty five total, I don't know how that works on amendments and all that, and that's, we didn't get into that, but uh. But that was my suggestions, um, and actually. A funny thing, but he had another public or another county with public health that had the same, exact same issue. And they were going to actually vote to just not give them money for their budget. So. Um, it's not good, new departments that it happened to or the only public health or other things, there's probably a lot more going on, you don't. You couldn't discuss with us or.
So evidently with Mike saying that, then we are legally capable of amending the budget to reduce it.
Out of next, yeah, reduce next year.
Twenty four, twenty five, even though it's not.
Yep, that's.
I guess with all the confusion on how it all happened. I don't want to stop them from doing the amendment now, I'd rather take it for twenty five thousand and into next year.
Yep, and she can figure.
In other words, in that, in other words, instead of them coming up short on their budget now, this year.
It does open up as it can, it could open up.
Yeah, that could, yeah, I'd rather, yeah, I'd rather move it into.
Yeah.
Future.
Because she did also talk to Elizabeth, you know, about how to do some of this thing, and that's one thing she said, we're running the papers problems, um, you know, Mike said we can do that. It's not an issue, but it would open up more can words, but that's not where I want to.
But it costs us more.
It could, it could cost us. Yeah.
We, there was confusion. So.
This gives you a full, full twelve months.
To do it now is just, I don't think that's right, I think.
Yeah, move it forward, that gives her full twelve months to figure it out, so.
We didn't want to read this. And this.
Oh, I've already read those.
Okay, but this says here, doesn't see anything wrong with your request for another vehicle.
But I think there's more emails on top of that, two that explain that.
Well, this was one went by, this is the date of the fifteenth, I'm not trying to.
But I.
I'm not blaming.
Yeah, she doesn't make.
Decision. I was just saying that I could, I could put it in the budget amendment or the expense and she doesn't understand budgeting at all.
Jesse and actually the board of health is still subject to having that, taking care of that budget and make sure they know.
Well, whatever's gotta be done, done anymore, I mean. And I don't realize.
That thirty thousand dollars was for that one vehicle.
Yep.
And even if you would have budgeted for two vehicles, I still would have been assuming that there would have been a W C D A grant to pay for the second one. Two, so if you didn't get that second one. Yeah, and if you didn't get the second one, you shouldn't have got the second vehicle. If, if I would have done it the way that you had.
Comes down, the biggest thing it comes down to is the revenue was not put in there for this. For the second vehicle, I mean.
Instead of the fifty five thousand that went in it.
Assumption was made.
So I agree with Jackie, yeah, that wasn't found on the second view.
And no matter what, it would have been general fund money if they didn't get the second grant.
Cause it was never a vehicle levy. There's what, you know. It just was not in that level, so.
But like, basically, we can all agree that the second vehicle should have waited a year till, waited a year. I know the reasoning was that the one vehicle is, you know, getting up there in miles and getting more expenses, but. That's just something we'd had to deal with at the time and the second vehicle should have waited.
But then going forward, they need a capital plan.
Capital plan.
And start building up money instead of just saying, I need thirty thousand dollars right now.
Cause then we can levy for that, there's five thousand, seventy five, whatever, you know, and now she, if she has these good vehicles there. You need to be looking ahead two, three, and four years on which ones are we gonna replace or not replace them. On a rotational basis, and that's where we gotta get to.
It's difficult to have nursing and home health today because you got either, you got a budget. For both departments.
Absolutely.
We can't, it's too bad we can't transfer. If we were started off an account, capital fund, it comes towards that, we can't. There's no way we could transfer it from one department to the other one, wherever the need is.
And they all got their own departments, yep.
Well, I mean. If you, I mean, if you were planning and set aside, I mean.
Yeah, you should be looking at both budgets and planning both budgets and, and she should be able to look at both others and figure out, okay. Like I said, she needs to do projections on where we're gonna be. You know, in two years, what do I need to replace or three years, what do I need to replace and how do I get to that point where I can put, I know you're always throwing out there, you know, is a car gonna be twenty thousand or eighty thousand, you don't. But you still gotta make some plans for it. And then when you get that much closer, then you can maybe figure out how you're gonna make it up somewhere else, but.
And this isn't the first year this has been talked about.
No, we tried to get that for years, so. So I think the motion.
So there is a motion to approve this as is.
Yes.
Made by.
I'll make that motion, yeah.
You did make that.
To make it approved as is, yeah.
And I second it.
Yeah.
And we've been discussing.
Okay.
But.
Do you want to?
Want to amend the motion.
Do you want to rescind your motion or amend the motion? And move it into next year?
Yes.
I wanna amend the motion and move that twenty five thousand dollars in the next year.
Uh, out of.
Out of.
Yeah, we will pay, pay for it this year.
Yep, but it's gonna come out of the budget.
She'll have to figure out.
You follow that?
Remove it, yeah.
I'll be sending that to you guys before I.
Yeah. So, I made a motion to approve the amended budget this year. With the amendment that we take that twenty five thousand dollars for public health for the vehicle and move it into the next fiscal year.
Twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah. So good to me.
And I will certainly.
Your second's so good, you're okay with that? Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just asked then, how will that affect our? Twenty four, twenty five.
She needs to start figuring out how she's gonna take that out. And be another twenty five thousand. You're gonna start looking ahead, start projecting what she can do to cooperate either with other counties or look to other services, whatever it's gonna take. And actually, that's, that's part of the board of health's job too, that's, we're gonna have to have discussions on this, where we're gonna go.
And there are more revenue or less.
Yeah, more revenue.
Or a combination.
Yeah, a combination of both. And she is finally pursuing some more revenue, which I've been after ever since I got on that board, they weren't taking all insurances, she started to take some of those, should have been done eight years ago. Um, we, we just gotta start looking ahead and how we can get that board, I wanna say more profitable, I guess.
Is there ways that we can share certain areas of that board with other counties?
Not board, but.
Or I mean, not the board, but the public health staff. And that's something that the board.
Something the board will have.
The board's gonna have.
Public health board.
Public health board's gonna have to take a look at that.
Like sheriff's office did.
Just like the sheriff's office did, prime example.
Is that right, conservation's gonna have to start looking at it, we're gonna have to figure stuff out. Perfect time when they got a budget made, they can actually come back next year and say, hey, we, we did some sharing and we knocked fifty thousand off. That'd be awesome.
Okay. Well, let's do a roll call vote. Lower, hi, maybe, hi, stone, hi. The budget amendment is approved with the adjustment of the twenty five thousand public health's vehicle. Okay. Next on the list is resolution twenty twenty four.
I'll tweak this a little bit, uh. I'll tweak this one a little bit to look like that.
Okay, okay.
But that's the one that goes to the, um.
Or.
Going state.
Right, that's a decided, yeah. All right. Just me or all real? Okay, uh, do you have resolution twenty twenty four dash two eight? Sell and convey interest of Worth County property. Um. Is hereby resolved, it's followed public hearing held this morning at nine AM, the Worth County Board of Supervisors finds that in the best interest of the county. To sell and convey the interests of Worth County to T M M Johnson Properties LLC for sixty thousand. With an agreement to develop said property in the near future. And the following prescribed real estate, which is. The um, part of, part of the property northwest of the casino with the, the blue water tower on it, um. In the neighborhood of about twelve acres. Um, it is further resolved that Aaron Stone is authorized to execute the development agreements. And the deed and any additional documents at the time of closing without further action by the Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash two eight?
I'll make motion for the resolution.
Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a special, questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote, lower, hi, maybe, hi, stone, hi. This resolution is duly adopted. People search, get the weight over there.
Hey.
Sorry.
Hey, good morning, wake up.
How are you?
Good, how are you, Jay?
Good, doing good.
I wasn't sure we wanted to follow that.
That's all right, that's all right.
Uh, let's see, April, pretty, pretty good month, um. Overall, normal stuff. Uh, we did have some chlorine pumping station issues, uh, basically it's a programming like glitch. And what we found was that it just wasn't running in auto, so we're just manually. It still runs in auto. It's uh, it's confusing, it, it'll still run when, when the well kicks on. But it just is dialed manually, so the adjustment is maybe, so we're working on that. We're gonna talk to E P, uh, figure out what happened with the program. Um, we did have to completely re-pipe. Um, all the chlorine addition lines, we, we actually raised up the pumping station. To create some room underneath for the scale and stuff that's under there. Just to make it more accessible, but we, we did rerun all new. Schedule like, uh, that's all glued fittings and so that took care of some leaks and some other issues. Uh, Ziegler was here for the annual inspection of the water plant generator, uh, that was. That was already in the works, but we were waiting on some parts, they had a extended, extended cooling flush. That they needed to do on that specific unit. And there were some leaks, so they were just waiting on some items to get in before they actually did it. But, but otherwise it would have, it would have been done when the other ones got done, but. Uh, so overall, their recommendation was a, a new battery, they actually recommend a, a battery. I don't have it in here, I don't think, but they recommend a battery. Like service agreement for three years. And I don't know, I mean, I looked at the price and it seems. A little out of bounds to me, um. I think they wanted, don't quote me on this, but it was somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen or sixteen hundred. And I thought. For that much, we could buy a battery twice a year for the next three years and still come out cheaper. And all we had to do is put it down.
This is a backup or, I mean, the battery.
It's just the start, yeah, it starts the dinner here, so.
And they've got triple chargers on.
Yeah, we have maintained.
The batteries normally and something like that lasts quite a bit longer.
Yeah.
A standard vehicle, your vehicle.
Yeah.
Just because it, it is getting run, but it's constantly getting maintained, so to me, I, I would just replace them when, you know. I mean, I, I would see every like five, forty five years.
Right.
Before you really have to worry about it.
Right, and I can get that, I don't, I didn't have the. Testament with me, she didn't send it to me until late last week and I was gone, so, um. But I mean, I can get that over, everybody can look at it, make sure it makes sense, you know, and just, I, I don't. I don't see that it does make sense, but I mean, just make sure I, you know, everybody's eyes are on it and. Everybody's in agreement, here, yes. Um. Let's see, we did do, um, we had business sooner come out last month. And I think we talked about this, but. And I think we talked about this, but it was. Was actually on last month, we had them, they hydroback the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, blow splitter box, the lift station at the wastewater treatment plant, that headworks channel. Uh, through the headworks room and then the water treatment plant backlog. Um. It just to the s- to the south of the building, um. That one was, there was quite a bit of sediment in there, um, but I don't think it had been done for quite some time. And the only thing they said was that they recommend coming back every couple of years and and doing that. I didn't think that that was gonna be a problem, um. But we didn't find anything, uh, nobody found anything out of the work, so. Good, that went well, we we did, uh, equalize sampling last month. Uh, per regulations, uh, we took five samples. Um, all samples were reported less than one, uh, so which means that the UV disinfection is. Working as it should. Uh, we did notice that the, uh, digester air mixing pump. Which was. Let me back up, so a couple of months ago, we had. Uh, we had gotten approved or had talked about a rebuilding of the air mixing, that was our spare. So thankfully, we did that because. We started having problems with the air mixing pump that was currently running, um. And the the rebuilt one was done, so we had Jason come up, he pulled the old, put the new in. And the old one is just, it's just wore out, it's just from age and. And and just general wear, so that one is going, um, have to be rebuilt. Mark, I had Mark, well, I don't know, Mark with Bersh, no rights. Uh, it's. It seems like, uh, it's been taking. Young a very, very long time to get us a quote for the gearbox in the headworks room. Um, this started before I started. And we're still waiting, and. So I had reached out to Bersh Millright and Mark came up and, you know, they do a lot of ethanol plants, a lot of industrial stuff, so they're. Maybe more geared toward it a little bit, um, and they got us quote, and I think. You sent that over?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um. The Eurodrive gearbox has changed since the installation of the one that we have. They are recommending, ours has gearbox adapter motor. They're recommending that we. X out the adapter and go gearbox and a new motor. And the motor's slightly different than the other one, so. All in all, I, the quote, the. The total quote was ninety three twelve, that's gearbox motor and. Install, so, um, I didn't think that that was. Sounded too unreasonable, uh, but since that's the only quote that we've been able to get, that's the only one that we've been able to provide, so. Um. I guess. We can. Decide on that or.
Yeah, just cause, is there anybody else around that can just? Give you a quote, give you a quote on the gearbox?
I can't find anybody.
Really?
No.
Specific.
Well, it's, I know, you gotta be.
Right.
Yeah.
But.
We would prefer to. Can't get it.
Keep trying, see what you can come up with.
I'll reach out and see if. See if there's anybody maybe in southern Minnesota that. Does that, does that kind of thing?
Do you think the ninety three twelve is?
I think that's pretty reasonable, yeah. Because. If it was just the gearbox, no, but it's the gearbox and the motor, and those are explosion proof motors, and they're pretty, they're pretty standard, so. Uh, so I.
Reach out and if you still can't get anybody, we'll have to make a call on that one.
See if you find it, okay, stay expand out the area a little bit, I guess.
Okay, I'll beat the bushes on that one, or we will, thank you, um. Lift station pump at. The wastewater treatment plant also, uh, had a failure last month, um, this is. Not anything to do with the computer that failed the month before, this is the actual pump at that lift station. Um, so we've, we've, we're fine, we ran with just one pump in auto. No problem, but we did have Jason come and pull that pump out, and he is, he has taken that, I mean. Been hard to run with without it, so. I mean, it's very long.
This, the one that had, did not get replaced, I assume, so. Was replaced on last year.
In at the wastewater, that's your lift station? Do you remember?
Might have been here and a half, it's before you guys, but it hasn't been that long.
I'm guessing it's not the one that we, because this one showed considerable wear. Um, and it worked, like I said, the other one's working fine, things. It managed a couple of days with without the second one, but we just don't wanna. We don't want her to run into an issue where we got one pump in that well, and then. And we got problems on the inside again.
Building resilience, it's not to have problems, yeah.
Yeah. So that's kinda where that's at, uh. Wetter King Electric came out, finished up the. Heads, I think we had three remaining heads that needed to be, so they they replaced heads, um, on the light poles. Um, but then the very next day, one of the old ones burned out, so. They recommend just replacing the existing heads that we've got with the new ones. Uh, they said that they're, you know, they'll continue to drop off one at a time. Do you remember what the total amount was? Like.
No, no. Well, each each head, I think it was like three hundred per head.
Yeah, I think we had.
They they replaced. Three, so there's seven, so, so in order to be replaced and. They said, I mean, some of them just look, they're dim, some of them are just flickering like they're about to go.
Right. So. It's not an emergent.
Right, yeah.
You know, but it's something that I'd hold off on, yeah, it's something that, um.
Keep the back of your mind.
Yeah, I mean, at least we got some light out there, so that's good. Uh, and this is actually May first, but we're gonna go ahead and report it since we're here. Uh, we started and finished sludge hauling. Uh, that went very well. So we have plenty of room for continuous wasting and things are, things are looking pretty good, I think, plant. Well. The only other thing that I, that we had was the two proposals or two quotes for the telemetry out of the. To create our. Run status between the lift station and the headworks room. We got StarNet Technologies, uh, and E P pump. Uh, StarNet was fifteen thousand one twenty five. And EP was twelve thousand one forty. So what that does is creates. Communication. Between. Water treatment plant, the lift station and the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, for flows coming out of. The water treatment plant to the lift station, lift station. Then. Sends information to the headworks room wastewater treatment, starts that process. Before we have an overflow and we have. Raw sewage bubbling out on the floor and can, conditions that. We had before.
And you're, so it measures the data and then transmits by radio to a area that says, hey, we got a problem.
Rather than hard wiring, it's a, it's like, it's a radio, basically radio installation signal. It also will allow us. To monitor the. Water treatment plant, uh, remotely, if necessary. For like if there's an alarm and, you know, if we're not at work. We can see what the alarm is, see what, you know, it also allows. EP or whoever the programmer is to radio in. To fix problems without having to be called, which. I would think at some point would save money, I mean. I don't know what that. Those numbers are exactly, but if you start saving. Calls.
Yeah. Well. When it comes to that. I guess I'm, I'd rather see somebody go in that building and verify.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, personally, I I do understand, uh, it's the technology's there, that's a good thing, but even at that. I mean, somebody's still gotta go on and just double check to see what's going on, I'm not hundred percent sold on. You know, wastewater, you can probably get away with that a little bit when it comes to water treatment. If somebody doesn't go in and verify what actually happens. It could be. A loss of pressure, it could be numerous things, and we don't wanna get to that, and no matter what happens, we're gonna get a call.
Right.
The thing I would find frustrating is that if they didn't. If it was able to be just monitored remotely, nobody came in and verified, but then got a call later. That we lost pressure or something a little more catastrophic happened. I probably wouldn't be very happy.
Right, right, and and that's, that's, you know, that's way down the list of, you know, I mean, yes, it's there and yes, available. It's, I'm just. Bring, letting you know that that's, that's a possibility with this technology.
Sure.
The 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 most important thing with this install would be. The data that's coming from the water treatment plant to the lift station, from the lift station to the waste treatment plant, because that's where. From that lift station to the waste treatment plant is where we're having problems, that's where this whole headworks room issue. You know, has stemmed from.
Yeah, and that remind me, that was from. Um. When both pumps kick on.
When any pump kicks on, so what happens?
Got that much, it shoves that much flow into that headwork.
Yeah, so what happens is the, how the program is set up is. The headworks room does not start. Until it reads flow in the weir, which is after. The headworks, but after the the rotating screen.
Mm-hmm.
So in the line, it goes from. Lift station to the treatment plant, through the treatment plant, then to the weir that measures the level. By the time that registers level to start the screen. Is too late, there's there's, you're already boiling.
Yeah.
Product out of that.
So in, in that weir then, is that where you're measuring flows?
Yes.
That's your flow meter?
That's the only one we got.
So would it be possible just to put? Sensor or meter of some sort on the front side of that?
Be asked about, I mean, we. Yeah, I mean, you could theoretically, yes, you could. Um, you have to dig up. Ground outside of the building and cut pipe and put in a type of flow meter that's not going to. Collect any of the debris. That's the, that's one of the biggest issues that they have, is I think that's like, uh. It's an eight or a ten inch pipe, so you would have to have basically. You wouldn't be able to have any meter sticking down because the, all the toilet paper and. Yeah, whatever else.
Many.
Yeah, it'd have to be some sort of mag meter that's, you know, eight or ten inches, and you, you know, then you've got excavation and. Cut, you know.
But there's no room anywhere short of that.
Inside, inside.
Inside the building. Alright, I think it's time for me to come out for a visit.
Please do. Yeah, please do, um.
Plus, we'll hold off on this for now, we'll. We'll discuss it as far as that communication stuff.
Call ahead, we'll make copies.
I'll come off as, well, you guys are just taking notice, it's easier for me to provide.
Yeah, absolutely, drastic, everything, so.
Yeah. Not saying you're doing anything wrong, guys, it's just, you know, in my head. I'd rather look at it smarter that way, and I envision it, so.
I understand, but, yeah, so. Nothing wrong with putting eyes on it.
But, other than that. We're good?
Yep.
Good. Do you have any questions?
No, you.
You gotta figure it out, know how it works.
It's a good thing you're sitting here. I'm following it, but it's.
Yeah.
You almost need to be working that category.
Yeah, I can draw pictures.
Stop out for a visit, you can learn all about it.
I've been there. Still complicated.
The gearbox is pretty much a given, we're gonna have to, you know, do something there, we just need to get another, just bid if you possibly can. If we can, we're just gonna have to go with this one.
Yeah, for our best interest, we just gotta make sure that.
Yeah.
That, you know, we're not messing that out.
Yeah, and I I I wanted to, I just didn't realize we were gonna take.
Like this one, like this radio equipment that measures the data and then transmits it. Does it, is it pretty reputable as far as, is it gonna last for quite a while, or is it like everything else we're running out there? It seems like we put it in this year and two years later, it's like, whoop, this just went.
Well, I'm not gonna give you any guarantees on.
I know that, but I mean, in in general, it's a free.
Yes, yeah, I got a good history.
Got a good history.
Yeah, it's, it's used in all over in wastewater industry, I mean, it's.
I'd say there's, a lot of stuff is, you see fifteen to twenty years.
That's great.
Where, and then all the. Is there certain components within that system, they don't make this thing, nor they can't adapt this, or be like our elevators and they use that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what it is, it gets, but it it does last quite a long time, from what I've seen, so.
But I do agree with AJ in the fact of, it probably wouldn't be bad to monitor it, but I do like to have somebody in the building.
Right, and I, and, yes, I totally agree, I don't think that. Any, in any operations, especially on twenty four hour type operations, you don't want to go hands free and just. Accept whatever the computer tells you.
I don't want it to cut down on the amount of time that you guys are spending there right now.
Because then you are, you are opening yourself up to, like AJ said, more catastrophic failure that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, can cost lots and lots of dollars.
Right. Exactly, so, you know, you're good. No.
Well, thank you very much, guys.
But, thank you, guys.
Alright, just a quick thing. Is there, has anybody got back to the quality in yet on the? These as far as.
Uh, well, we're, that was more or less the connection. To get them onto our system.
Right, but I mean, if they got, as the owners.
I gotta, I did talk to Jason about that one, I don't remember what he said, let me look into that, see where, yeah.
Cause every, we go from one week to the next week.
Yes.
Keep.
Speaking of down the road.
Yeah, Elizabeth comes up two years in a row and says, whoop, the wastewater treatment plants.
Still losing money.
It's still losing money, gentlemen.
So, still bleeding money, I don't know, yeah, exactly.
Uh, alright, we're back to Super Roger Weekly and Leave, right? Yeah, he said you were all good after the.
I'm good.
Mark, you have any?
Just met Mike, go away, get phone calls with Mike to discuss, you know, what we should be or not be doing, so, have a good chat with him again.
Yeah. Um, all they had is Rich and I sat in a Zoom meeting with, uh. Nothing, looking at buying some lots out in. In the development, um, and looking at traffic flows with the DOT and this company, so, um, to see what. So we don't have to redesign this thing ten different times, try to get it figured out so we can.
It's gonna be nice.
Get flow in there. To work with this development and do it once, so.
So basically to study to how we could get into that development better is what.
Yeah.
One on five.
Yeah, yeah, and the DOT is not gonna allow. Pretty much anything between the onramps and the intersection.
No.
That's what I figured.
That gap is, was established in, what, sixties, seventies when the interstate was put in?
Yeah. In fact, the gap is actually. Probably a little shorter than what the standards are now, they've increased them, and it's basically with trying to get merging traffic in, so what we're looking at is. What can we do maybe off of Wheeler Wood? And as the intersection in general. What do we need to look at? To maybe just. Be done designing for each little business that comes in.
Right.
Um. There are options, but, uh. That's all, are the best ideas.
Well, I think we just, big thing we're looking at is that the south side at intersections, turn lanes, widening, that.
And maybe even something to modify in the actual. Development itself to allow or.
Yeah.
For different.
Maybe a little different modifications on a portion of that.
True, but, yeah.
But it's all kinda just discussion now, and if if something does go development, we'll have more discussion on, okay, this is what. We should look.
I think we actually asked their engineers to if they had some ideas that would, their flows. With what's out there too, so. There's some businesses that really wanna come, we'll definitely look at. And that's what we kind of relate to, it was like, you know, we, we wanna work with.
Yeah.
Traffic and and getting, you know, once you spur development in one location, it kinda helps with the rest.
Absolutely.
We just don't wanna create a chaotic situation where it's not, it's not good for anybody to wanna exit there and make. Make traffic worse.[1788.98]
Exit there and make, make traffic worse than it is.
Easy to go any direction.
Yeah.
It's already chaotic out there.
Yeah.
Our candlesticks do such a good job. I know, I admit that that driveway probably should have never been put in. That's the biggest issue we have out there and, and. And even had the driveway not been placed there. I think it'd still be complicated to get in and out of that. That location, just based on what's there.
Cause when you get down.
Planned real well at the time.
Yeah, well, when you get down to that other entrance of come and go, then that's the entrance to the casino. So then you're starting to. Have a lot of congestion on that point.
A little bit.
If you get.
It's patience.
Development on the south side, you're really gonna congest it.
Yes.
Oh.
Good.
Got it. You need to go to four lanes and. Roundabouts, you never know.
Poof, I was just gonna bring it up.
No.
Long as it's big.
I won't bet, you know, you know, and, and, and. Get myself.
Not many people like them.
And as long as you try don't put a chain of them in, I mean, there's something to be said about the flow of traffic through those things.
Well, I'd be glad, the first thing you do is we've got the speed slowed down, we've got interstate, that was ridiculous, and that would help. It would help with the roundabout.
If, if, if possibility of a roundabout ever, ever was. Concrete after that. You still have. Possibilities, and I know up in the mancado area, they've got designated right hand turn lanes where you can even enter the roundabout if you're going a certain direction, so. Think of the fact that the, the existing right turn lane going to the casino area, that's still a. A dedicated turn lane, and anybody wanting to go anywhere else just kind of flows right through and. And it could be a potential even off of Witherwood to go.
South.
S- the south dedicated turn, I mean, you could have dedicated turn lines and it's just a matter of. Going straight is the only time you really need to kind of maneuver through.
Coming north on Witherwood instead of stopping at that light, you can just make the right turn to get back to the interstate that way.
There's options there to make. On traffic flow a little bit.
Right away, we can. We can work.
All right, we're not.
A lot of decisions.
But there are options there.
I don't think you wanna randomly throw one in there.
No, 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 but I think that we've, we've. The, the, the fact that we've changed it from red, yellow, green to always stop is probably made.
Cause I'm guessing.
A better improvement out there in recent years.
Serious improvement in truck traffic there with what Ruddlin built up.
Well, and that's what.
And that's the other thing we gotta consider too is.
Two facilities are gonna take on more.
Sure, giving them another road. You know, paved roads just more out, so that he doesn't go there with, or that business doesn't go there, they would take their business to west, south, or. But I'm guessing they're gonna go all directions, so. You know. When they get going.
And obviously, with, with the traffic, I think you get to make it big enough for.
Yeah. I mean, that, you on a busy day and, and I mean, spring and fall, when, and then when the casino is busy all at the same time, that could really be a. Right. You know, big trucks and cars don't go well together.
Yeah.
So.
Anyway, there's, yeah, we had some stuff on that, and there's more to come.
That's right, there's no downlines.
Regardless, you know, there's, there's more to come on that.
There'll be no few downlines of it.
And the D O T, the D O T did, you know. Encouraged. I think they were encouraging them development there too. I think they really.
Yeah.
See development.
Yeah.
But they have their restrictions, and a lot of it's federal. It's not even a state, it's a federal highway, and so.
Highway, yeah.
See, well, they gave the state take care of. The state just has to maintain it, but they gotta follow by the federal rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all I had. Um, was there any department head discussion?
I had a couple of things.
Yeah.
Um, we do have two applicants for the deputy position that sent down for M M P I and health physicals today, so we are moving forward with that. I gotta call from Greg Beaver when I send here out to call him back. The only other thing I had, we did have a transmission go down on a vehicle that I replaced a week ago, then we have an engine go down. I was thinking about tin can in that one, but it's one that we did find a used engine port, and we're gonna be transferring it over to county roads, so I'm gonna put the money into it to fix that engine. Um, it's gonna be about eight grand, but I've got it in my budget. Um, I feel good about doing that, moving it over to. Another county, so county vehicles, so. Just couple of them hit me kind of big, so you'll see them, a couple of big bills.
Okay. I had something to, um. We're still work, working on our Iowa County Engineers uh safety action plan, so. Um. And it's, in order to get a safety action plan established, once we get one established, we can apply for some of these S S four eight grants that are federal grants for. Safe Streets for All is what it's. Uh. The, the acronym for the grants. And without a safety action plan, they don't really want to award any grants to people though. So anyway. We're planning to have a meeting. We had to go through and kind of schedule what works for us, and this is just in the District Two area. Um, with the group that we're communicating with, there are other, yeah, the whole state, actually, there's all, all but maybe two or three counties going through this. Safety action plan, which we had. Put money towards, but anyway, September fourth. From eight. From eight o'clock or eight thirty till two is we're trying to find, we're gonna schedule our meeting for then, and it's gonna take. Uh, share of E M A, fire, E M S. Um, public health, attorney, board supervisors, schools, veterans fair, you know. Um, Farm Bureau and, and get everybody in a room and start talking about, a lot of us do with aging drivers, the aging community, um. Um, it's, it's all safety on secondary, on, on the roadways, and what can we do or some sort of plan, and. And a lot of it's gonna be discussed with the consultant that's been hired to do all this stuff, but. We've looked at all of our things here, um. You know, even with traffic. Traffic uh accidents, things like that, where we said. Um, statewide with our averages and, and things like that, so. Uh. September fourth is what we're planning to do. I've got to by the end of the month, schedule a location, which. Which, you know, it's a location that can hold up to thirty people. I don't know if the meeting room over in. At the. Uh, I think just push a fifty. And E O C, I think.
So you can.
Ask Mark, but I think. And Mark's on there, Mark, Tomlinson, what can you hold? Isn't it close to fifty in the E O C there?
If. Yeah, if we, if we take the tables out and just put chairs in, we can hold quite a few.
And we probably won't see that many people there. It's a matter of timing and things like that, but I think we'll try to, if I can, Mark, I'd like to reserve that. Or September fourth for a whole day.
I'll check and let you know. I don't believe it's. Reserved, but I'll, I'll check here just a second.
Always I got that stage done. In the meantime, we've got advertisements and letters to send out to all the entities involved. To get them on board and it, keep it in front of them to come to this meeting, because the more, the more participation you have from all the other entities, the. The better plan we can get it, sure, we'll say. Possibly better funding in the future. Right, and a lot of, you know, it has to do with, like I said again, aging drivers, young drivers, O W I's, all that kind of thing. Strapped and right. Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's one of the other ones too, and, and you know, all this.
Small test.
You know, and then they're on the roads, and then, you know, once they're on the roads, what, you know, so it's, it's, it's all kinds of things to, to evaluate, just to put a. A plan together to get some of this federal funding, sure. If it's, if we can actually get it, so.
You'll have to, Rich, you'll have to ask the sheriff if he can move his deputies meeting that day. It's. On a day they're scheduled. A lot of times they. They're pretty flexible about maybe moving it or something.
Well, this one's kind of set and. Uh, maybe set in stone already, so. Yeah. It's.
Do they have their meetings in the morning or in the afternoon? Uh, if they have them, they have them at one o'clock.
Usually we're done with. Usually the afternoon is set with the engineers, so he can still do a morning session, but I'll talk with the sheriff too.
Yep, yep, it, it's not unusual that they either, they have something else or they don't have one too, so.
It's like the morning, the morning half, morning couple of three hours is just with all of the entities involved, and then. The afternoon is basically me and the other consultant, we're kind of going through some things in the afternoon, so might work, not that they can still keep their meeting, but.
Yep, I'll just pencil it in for now at least.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to kind of set up and let you guys know that this is coming. September is probably coming faster than we ever wanted to, but um, we need to get moving, get in the spot set up, and then. I gotta make sure all of our contacts are. Legit, which they seem to be. They did all the work for us, thank, thank goodness, cause. Trying to track everybody down is.